...at large, in the interest of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed meeting, the detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take actions, so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We will go in a little bit different order this evening, and we have the opportunity to begin by swearing in three board members. With us this evening to do the swearing in, we have College Station ISD former chemistry teacher, assistant principal and principal, the Honorable Rick Hill. Justice of the peace for Precinct Three is here with us this evening to swear in Dr. Michael Wesson, Jeff Harris, and Quinn Williams for places three, four, and five respectively. And so, Judge Hill, we begin with Dr. Wesson.
All right. This is not my good side, but...
All right. It's my honor to do this this evening for you guys. So, if you'll raise your right hand, sir. I state your name.
Aye. Michael Wesson.
Don't say "state your name." Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Execute the duties...
Execute the duties.
Of the office of...
Of the office of...
College Station Independent School District...
College Station Independent School District.
School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
Of the State of Texas...
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
Best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Raise your right hand, sir.
Aye, Jeff Harris.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of...
Of the office of...
College Station Independent School District.
College Station Independent School District.
School Board Trustee of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Raise your right hand, sir. I state your name.
Aye, Quinn Williams.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of...
The duties.
College Station Independent School District.
College Station Independent School District.
School Board Trustee...
School Board Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
Superintendent Ely, as much as I love coming to school board meetings, I think I'm...
Moving on to item D, recognitions, D1, pledges of allegiance to the American flag, Texas flag, in a moment of silence. We have students from Greens Prairie Elementary and Rock Prairie Elementary here to lead us. And to introduce our students are Robin Jones, Principal of Rock Prairie, and Donna Barrington, Principal of Greens Prairie. Ladies?
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present two of our fine students at Greens Prairie Elementary, their four prayers. They are spelling, uh, these, uh, good words of spelling. Uh, this is Jan Valverde and Emily and Alorso. Um, they read 24 rounds in our last study, uh, in the word Thanksgiving, and between the two of them, read 12 rounds. So, uh, the words were Mahogany and the green word was Allen. So, I think, uh, we could deal with them in this way. Battling now, again, we're another one of three members of the school. So, keep them moving. Hello. Thank you all for allowing us to participate this evening. Members, before Dr. Ely, and it's my pleasure to present to you the Gatewood family. And Dr. Mrs. Gatewood and their family moved here this year from Houston to be part of our school district in Canyon Rock Prairie. And I couldn't be more excited because these are very amazing girls, and they are going to introduce themselves to you. They've been practicing.
Hi. My name is Mrs. Green Gatewood and my name is... Her name is... Thank you. And what is your thing?
You told me all week is your favorite thing about Rock Prairie?
Lunch.
Lunch. Shout out to Mrs. Dom in the cafeteria. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Take a picture with the board. Dr. Yoken, members of the board, we have one staff member that we get to honor tonight. It's my pleasure to honor A&amp;M Consolidated High School art teacher Jamie Bevins, who's been named a distinguished fellow by the Texas Art Education Association, or TAEA. In 1994, TAEA established a category of membership to be called distinguished fellows of Texas Art Education Association. Under this program, the association may confer the title fellow on members who have made lifelong distinguished contributions to the work of the association and advancement of the art profession. Including this year's three recipients, Jamie is one of 55 current and past art teachers to have ever received this distinction in Texas. Jamie is in her 31st year of teaching at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. She was hired 31 years ago by Chrissy...
Pause for effect.
To teach geometry and was a fabulous geometry teacher, as she is a fabulous art teacher. She's also serving as the TAEA Executive Board Treasurer. In addition, she was named the TAEA High School Educator of the Year in 2013. The distinguished fellows serve in advisory capacity to the executive committee and are dedicated to the continuance of the mission and vision of TAEA and dedicated service to the membership through their advanced knowledge and skills in the profession of art education. Please help me recognize Ms. Jamie Bevins. And Dr. Yoken, that concludes our recognition.
Why we are settling in, we'd like to go ahead and recognize the great artwork, particularly after we've had an opportunity to recognize a great art educator within our school district. We see some samples of the art that our students do decorating the boardroom for the holidays, and for that, we're very thankful. The artwork is from Greens Prairie Elementary, Rock Prairie Elementary, Cypress Grove Intermediate, and some of the holiday cards are selected by campuses and district departments to be sent out that are over here on the wall in the green paper. So, thank you for that work. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The items that are on consent are H, K3, K4, K5, K6, K7, K8, K9, and K10. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to pull off?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So, the motion carries 7-0. Pardon me. We'll move on to F1, receive report related to trustee continued education hours. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. As you know, by statute, at the last regularly scheduled meeting of the calendar year, statute requires that board member continuing education be publicly reported and read into the record. With the information for the calendar year 2016 is Executive Assistant to the Board, Carrie Horn. Ms. Horn?
Thank you. Since 1986, the State Board of Education rule has required that a public announcement be made each year of the names of the board members who have completed the required continuing education hours and who are deficient. Annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under the State Board of Education rule. The president shall cause the minutes of the local board to reflect the following information. House Bill 2563 passed in the 80th legislative session amended the Texas Education Code, Section 11.159, to include reporting board training hours at the last regular meeting of the calendar year. The summary of board member training for position one, trustee Mike Nugent. Number of hours in training for tier one, four hours completed. Tier two, three hours. Tier three, 19.5, for a total of 26.5 hours. Position two, trustee Carol Barrett. Tier two, three hours. Tier three, 15 hours, for a total of 18. Trustee Michael Wesson, position three. Tier three hours, three. I'm sorry, tier two hours, three. Tier three hours, 14.5, for a total of 17.5. Trustee Jeff Harris for position four. Tier three hour, tier two hours, total of three. And tier three, 10 hours, for a total of 13 hours. Trustee Quinn Williams, position five, has three hours of tier two and 15.5 hours for tier three, for a total of 18.5 hours. Trustee Michael Schaefer, position six. Three hours for tier two, 19 hours for tier three, for a total of 22 hours. Trustee Valerie Yoken, position seven. Three hours for tier two, 13 hours for tier three, for a total of 16 hours. No board members are deficient.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is F2, consideration discussion of possible action related to reorganizing the board officers. We're going to defer that until the executive session at the end of the meeting and move on to F3, board directions and reports announcements, superintendent reports and announcements. Does anybody on the board have anything they'd like to report?
With the Education Foundation, just a quick word with 50 Men Who Can Cook, which could be titled incorrectly now, I believe we have 60 celebrity chefs now, but the date, as hopefully everyone has on their calendar, February 3 at the Brazos County Expo. Another, I believe we're at about, I'm not sure if Teresa's here, if we have, I think we've got at least 140,000 in sponsorship so far, and I believe the goal is 250. Well on the way to that, but tickets can be purchased from any celebrity chef, one who may be sitting up here right now. Absolutely. There we go. Or any, any member of the Education Foundation board. And you can also text this year to buy a ticket, to, you can just text 50men to 41444. Pretty high tech.
Anybody else?
Are you in the spirit? Were you able to attend the Personnel Advisory Council meeting? And I think probably the biggest thing that I came away with this time was what's involved in getting substitute teaching. I mean, the number, I can't remember the number the other day, but it would, remember that?
Which number?
The number of...
Lots of numbers.
The, the number of substitutes were out on a particular day, the day it was...
We had 160 out the other day, and I don't know what the total was.
No, but it just, trying to herd 168 cats. It was very impressive how the school district goes through it and what they have to go through with substitute teaching. I mean, it was, I would not want that job.
We have great kids.
Any other reports? We'll move on to Superintendent, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. I have sort of a committee report. I was privileged today to join the Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce, who got to meet with our three elected representatives who were in town, Senator Charles Schwartner, Representative Kyle Cassell, and Representative John Rainey, and get a little preview of the session from those three gentlemen, as well as share some of the highlights of the chamber's state legislative action plan with them. So, that was a good opportunity to meet with them. We actually got to spend a little bit of time talking about A through F, which we'll have a chance to talk about here just in a few minutes in a couple of ways. So, I was excited to be able to do that. Do want to talk about where we are calendar-wise. We do have a specially-called board meeting next week. It will be Monday, December the 19th at noon. Do want to explain a little bit of why we're calling that. The purpose of that is for the board to approve new courses for the upcoming school year, so we can get that thing to print over the holiday break. DEIC, who has to approve them before the board approves them, doesn't meet till tomorrow because we moved the board date. So, that's kind of how we kind of got backwards. So, that necessitates us coming back on Monday at noon for a meeting to be able to go over that. And then, the last day for students before the break will be that next day, Tuesday the 20th, and that will be an early release day. Coming back after the break on the 3rd, January the 3rd, we have a comp day for teachers and staff. Those who have more than six hours of staff development outside the school day will not be here. Teachers and staff members, we're looking for you to come back on Wednesday the 4th because that will be a staff development and work day here in the school district. And students, we're not looking for you until Thursday the 5th. So, we hope to see all of you back then, Thursday, January the 5th. So, that's some of the things that we have coming up. It is the last meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of the year. We do hope that everybody has a safe and relaxing holiday season and is able to take some great time off and spending with family and friends and celebrating and worshiping in the manner that you do. That's my report.
We'll move on to F4, consider approval of a resolution concerning the A through F accountability rating system for Texas public schools. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. I'll take a sip of water before this one. We have been having a discussion as a team of eight with the administration and now have extended that discussion into the community in regards to the upcoming implementation of the newest state accountability system in the State of Texas. Beginning with the 1718 school year, the state will begin to rate each of the 1,030 school districts and thousands and thousands of schools with a rating of A, B, C, D, or F. We have looked at some of the implications of how this has been tried in other states. It's in fact been tried in 16 other states, and there's a pretty extensive body of knowledge to be able to learn from the implementation of other states. We do know that, like other states, our system is tied primarily to a state mandated test that's given in the spring of the year. In fact, 55% of our system is tied to that. We took the step, the bold step, I believe, of bringing in an outside expert to talk to our community about this issue last week. Last Tuesday, we had John Tanner in here, and he spoke to the board members here, our community members, folks from A&amp;M, elected representatives, and then board members and administrators from surrounding districts about this system. We believe that this, the system which is designed to identify, which is designed to identify 5% of the districts and campuses in the state is failing and will only allow, identify a certain number of As and Bs, and will identify a vast majority of the districts as Cs to be one that's detrimental for a number of reasons. One is that reducing a, reducing a school to a rating has a very detrimental effect to that school. We all know that in every school, there's all sorts of range of abilities within that school, from high achieving to average kids to low achieving kids. To reduce all of the kids in a school to a C or a D is unfair to the other kids in the school who are not that, and they are not all Cs and Ds. Conversely, to say that every kid in a school is an A because your school gets an A is equally unfair. We have a range of abilities in every school, and we have a range of successes in every school in this community and across the state, and those successes and those differences should be celebrated and not reduced to a letter grade. So, we've, we've had a discussion regarding that. We've had an expert come in and talk to that. The next step on this is to see what the board's pleasure is in potentially adopting a resolution against this particular policy. I would note that some other districts throughout the state are considering, actually this week as well, very similar resolutions in their district as, as we look to get out and make a statement in regards to how we feel about A through F accountability. So, with that as a preamble, I'd love to turn it over to the board for any discussions you may have regarding this.
One of the things that I think is important is, is the realization that we have an opinion on whether or not the system works, part even knowing what our personal rating might be as a school district or for some of our schools, is that fundamentally, I don't think we agree with the legislation and, and what it's going to do for all Texas schools, not just what it might do to College Station. Any other comments or concerns?
Did I hear you say the district is rated as well as every school in the district?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wasn't clear on that.
Yes, sir.
This one's a little bit tough for me. I'm a big believer in accountability and measuring people and their performance and then holding them accountable for how they produce, and I believe the state should do that. I just don't think this is it. I think this is a wholly inadequate way to effectively, I'll use the term, grade schools. And to me, we, we had a great presentation last week. The, the thing that hit home with me the most, though, was one of the questions asked, and it was the guy that asked the question about, "I've got two schools. One of them has 90% low SES, and the other is the inverse. It's 10% low SES. And you're going to apply a letter grade to each of those, and then that's going to be how those schools are viewed." Now, knowing what we know about education and the challenges faced and, and everything that goes into student performance, you can have a school that's going to get an A there when the school itself might not be doing a very good job, they just have a different student mix. When you can that easily in a question at a random thing in College Station, Texas, basically undermine the integrity of the entire system, that suggests to me the system's not good. You know, I don't, I don't know about the timing of the resolution, if we need to do it tonight or, or not, but I do think we need to strongly consider it, and depending on what Dr. Ely tells us about that, we can move forward. But I don't like this system, and that's coming from not knowing the grades at all that we're going to get. And I think that is an important thing to consider. I mean, it's, it's easy to say you don't like a system after you get a bad grade, and it's, it's quite another thing, not knowing to say it, because I expect we will get pretty good grades, probably not all As, but we'll, we'll do okay. Anyway, that's where I stand on it.
You know, I, I think one of the things that was mentioned at that meeting we were at is that, you know, simple measures are fantastic, and in general, simpler is better, unless it's wrong. And I just, you know, we have been at the forefront of this as a district in terms of coming up with an effective way for our community to judge our success. And we have been at the forefront of community-based accountability, which I think our community has wanted. We have wanted as a district to be as open and upfront on lots of different measures of success. And for some of our state lawmakers to essentially come down to the notion of, "We are going to take everything that a school district brings to the table and narrow that down to one single letter grade," I find that to be ludicrous on its face. And it's clear that we're going to get this, but I can tell you one thing, at least on a personal level, is that I will put absolutely zero stock in the grade that we receive, whether that is an A all the way to an F. I would encourage members of our community to hop online at our webpage and look into our community-based accountability ratings, which we have posted and have been very upfront with, from state testing to any, a whole host of things that we measure ourselves on to try to make us better. And the notion that we're going to take 50 measures of...
This one's a little bit tough for me. I'm a big believer in accountability and measuring people and their performance and then holding them accountable for how they produce, and I, I believe the state should do that. I just don't think this is it. I think this is a wholly inadequate way to effectively, I'll use the term, grade schools. And to me, we, we had a great presentation last week. The, the thing that, that hit home with me the most, though, was one of the questions asked, and it was the guy that asked the question about, I've got two schools. One of them has ninety percent low SES, and the other is the inverse. It's ten percent low SES, and you're going to apply a letter grade to each of those. And then that's going to be how those schools are viewed. Now, knowing what we know about education and the challenges faced and, and everything that goes into student performance, you can have a school that's going to get an A there when the school itself might not be doing a very good job. They just have a different student mix. When you can that easily in a question at a random thing in College Station, Texas, basically undermine the integrity of the entire system, that suggests to me the system's not good. I don't, I don't know about the timing of the resolution, if we need to do it tonight or, or not, but I do think we need to strongly consider it, and depending on what Dr. Ely tells us about that, we can move forward. But I don't like this system, and that's coming from not knowing the grades at all that we're going to get. And I think that is an important thing to consider. I mean, it's, it's easy to say you don't like a system after you get a bad grade, and it's, it's quite another thing, not knowing to say it, because I expect we will get pretty good grades, probably not all As, but we'll, we'll do okay. Anyway, that, that's where I stand on it.
You know, I, I think one of the things that was mentioned at that meeting we were at is that, you know, simple measures are fantastic, and in general, simpler is better, unless it's wrong. And I, I just, you know, we have been at the forefront of this as a district in terms of coming up with an effective way for our community to judge our success. And we have been at the forefront of community-based accountability, which I think our community has wanted, we have wanted as a district, to be as open and upfront on lots of different measures of success. And for some of our state lawmakers to essentially come down to the notion of, we are going to take everything that a school district brings to the table and narrow that down to one single letter grade, I, I find that to be ludicrous on its face. And it, it's clear that we're going to get this, but I can tell you one thing, at least on a personal level, is that I will put absolutely zero stock in the grade that we receive, whether that is an A all the way to an F. I, I would encourage members of our community to hop online at our webpage and look into our community-based accountability ratings, which we have posted and have been very upfront with, from state testing to any, a whole host of things that we measure ourselves on to try to make us better. And the notion that we're going to take fifty measures of success, some of which we do better at than others, and boil us down to an average of all these things that are apples and oranges in nature, I just, I find that to be a hard thing. So I'm wholeheartedly behind this resolution. I think that most school districts around the state, whether they pass a resolution like this or not, are probably find this measure to be pretty abhorrent. And I, I, I just think that as a community, we're, we're better than narrowing it down to this. As a state, we should be better than narrowing it down to this. And the notion that, you know, as, 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 as a person whose profession is education, at the higher education level, the notion that I would walk into any one class and before I started teaching, know that I'm automatically going to give five percent of the kids in that class an F, regardless of how well they actually do, I think most people would find that inherently to be an unfair system. My goal is to make sure that every student walks out of my class having learned an adequate level of information and having gained knowledge, and the fact that I walk in and upfront, I'm going to tell them, no matter what, what anybody in this class does, I'm going to automatically give five percent of you an F is just unacceptable. So I'm, I'm one hundred percent behind this as an individual.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to see a sign in as well, because on the student side of that, I don't know how many, if any classroom would be allowed to give one test for one grade for the whole, for the whole semester or whole year. And somehow, when you put it in that perspective, it, it's so wrong, because I, I cannot imagine that any district would allow a teacher to do that, that your whole grade is based on one test on one given day, and now you're going to do that to the district on a test that we're, I'm going to say it one more time, that we're not even sure is valid.
Anybody else?
Well, we, we learned from John Tanner that in the other sixteen states, nobody was satisfied with this rating system, and, and I asked him, if nobody's satisfied with it, then why are they still doing it? And he said, they just keep tweaking it, thinking they're going to make the test better, and so they just keep changing, changing the rules and changing the game to try to make it more right, which is not a healthy system. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the resolution.
So the, excuse me, the administration, this school board in this community indeed is not against accountability. It's not against being held responsible for students performing to the highest standards that they can perform. I, I appreciate the community-based accountability system being brought out. That is the, that is what is ultimately resolved, is that the state would, would set up a system that empowers local school districts to design their own internal systems of assessment accountability that still meet general state standards, but can meet the actual needs of each individual school and school system. And I think that's, we've done a lot of work in that area and community-based accountability. We can do even better with that, but I, I like the, the model, I like the road that we're traveling down, and I think it's, I think it'd be beneficial for those others in the state as well. So it would be the administration's recommendation that the board adopt this resolution.
If you're looking for a motion, I'll be glad to make it. I would recommend that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution, calling on the Texas Legislature. Sorry about that, Chuck. I, I'll do it with the mic on the whole way through. I recommend that the Board of Trustees of the College Station Independent School District adopt the resolution as presented, calling on the Texas Legislature to repeal the rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts and develop a community-based accountability system that empowers school districts to design their own internal systems of assessment and accountability.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Trustees for your leadership in this area. The work that we're doing in community-based accountability and the work we're doing, taking a stand on this, is because of your, your leadership in this area, and we thank you.
We'll move on to F five, consider approval of the CSISD legislative priorities for the eighty-fifth Texas Legislature. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Earlier in the meeting, when I thought the wireless mouse worked, I was planning on being there, so let me jump on up here. We talked about CSISD draft legislative priorities at the workshop session last month. Based on the feedback that we have received from, from the board, we have addressed and made some adjustments to those. What you have before you this evening, I'll go through quickly. First item would be for the, calling on the Legislature to provide a school finance system that adequately, equitably funds all schools, take the admonishment from the Texas Supreme Court to overhaul the system would be the first thing. And the second was what we talked about at length at our workshop last time, and that's the notion, not notion, the actuality that the state is taking local tax dollars and using them to fill holes in the state budget. You may have seen a article by Ross Ramsey in the Texas Tribune earlier this week, perhaps late last week, and talked about the change over the last ten years in both state and local funding of education. State funding per child has dropped over the past ten years, three hundred and nineteen dollars per child, while local funding has increased nine hundred and ninety dollars per child. That's because the state's share, proportional share of funding has dropped from forty-five percent to below forty percent, somewhere around thirty-eight. So what is happening is local tax dollars that are being collected by school districts are going back to the state, and they're being reapportioned to other areas of the state budget. So as one board member put it, there should be a greater call for greater budget transparency from the state. That has been added, and greater transparency in the use of local property taxes. And then the third bullet there is the additional revenue generated from business and homeowner school property taxes should be dedicated and used for public schools, to be reinvested in public schools and not into any other areas of the general state revenue. Second item has to do with public schools and the voucher private school choice plans. We came back and changed this per board feedback to be a stronger stance, and that is to not take any resources from public schools through voucher and school choice plans, any of those plans, whether they're called vouchers, educational savings accounts, tax credit, taxpayer savings grants, tuition reimbursements, et cetera. Do not take money out of the public school system and give it into private or home schools with little or no acadi-, financial accountability or academic accountability. And then, as we know, many of those schools don't have to abide by the certain things that's public schools do, like provide bilingual and special education services and unemployment contracts, and provide lunch and transportation and those types of things. We're gonna, we've already talked a lot about A through F, so I'll skip over that, but I do want to talk about other key standards items, and these are a repeat that we've, we had two, two years ago at the last session, and that's to reduce the amount of state mandated testing to those that are required by the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that is testing in grades three through eight in reading and math, and then fifth and eighth grade science. So that would be tying those to the, to, to the federal standards and, and only those types of, those assessments that are required there. And then reducing the number of curricular standards. We've talked with this board a number of times about the standards in Texas, Texas' essential knowledge and skills being a mile wide and an inch deep. What we would like to do is see a fewer standards to allow teachers to teach to greater depth. Too many classes and too many subjects, it's a race. It's a race to get to the end of the school year and cover all the topics that have been mandated by the system, and so allow, allow the teachers to go into greater depth and allow for greater student learning. We are a fast-growth community. We've, we've been growing for years. We know that. What are some things that can provide some relief to that? We know that Texas adds about eighty thousand students, public school students every year. It's like adding Austin ISD or Fort Worth ISD. Eighty percent of those kids go to fast-growth school districts like College Station ISD. Our taxpayers pay the brunt of providing seats for those students, via through renovations for additional classroom space or new buildings for students. So give the communities who would do that the ability to exceed the arbitrary cap of fifty cents per hundred dollars of valuation to be able to provide those seats in those communities that would vote to do that, and those are all subject to tax, to, to voter approval. And expand the use of state funding programs that are already there, existing debt allotment, instructional facilities allotment, and new instructional facilities allotment. Increased state share of the cost of educating kids and for new facilities would allow meaningful tax, local tax reduction for our taxpayers by more state funding going into the system. And finally, it was asked to be brought forward last time, and we added it here, provide more meaningful local control for important issues like the school calendar, to increase the local control by allowing districts to start no earlier than the third Monday in August, those extra five days, I think would make all the difference in the world for everything that we would want to do. And so we have added that as well. So based on the feedback we received last time, these would be our draft legislative action plan or draft legislative priorities. I'd love to answer any questions or hear comments in regards to this.
Thank you for taking the feedback that we provided the last time we went through it and, and including that. So I, I think that it, you've captured all the things that we did point out at that time, but does anybody have anything else that they see or other comments they want to make?
I move we adopt the legislative priorities as presented for the upcoming legislative session.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Do we have any hearing of citizens? All right, thank you. Move on to I one, receive report on the CSISD Head Start and Pre-Kindergarten Services. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members, excuse me, members of the board. We get the great pleasure of having Sharon Jackson come talk to us a lot about some of the things that are going on with Head Start from time to time, and this is a great opportunity for her to just give a broad overview of the Head Start program and other early education services like pre-kindergarten. So we, we do have a number of programs that are involved with our kids who are younger than kindergarten, so. This is Sharon Jackson, is here to give this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, and members of the board. It's always my pleasure to talk to you about our littlest learners, and so we're going to go through several things tonight, some perhaps reminders, but I know Mr. Nugent doesn't know as much about Head Start and pre-K perhaps, so some of this is for you. So what is the state of early childhood in College Station ISD? We're going to talk about an overview of the services. We're going to talk about some specific information for each one of those services, kind of a by-the-numbers report, some challenges and celebrations, of course, and future plans. So as we begin, though, I think it's important that we realize, working with young children is hard. You remember that with your own young children. Being a parent is hard work. Little ones take lots of, lots of care and actually lots of money to take care of them appropriately. So I think it's important for us to, to make note initially that it does take a village, and this program is so fortunate to be able to have the village all around us. As we talk about programming, certainly we have these departments that support us in our programming when we come to support. There are these departments that specifically support the work that we do every day with children from pregnancy all the way through their preparation for kindergarten. So I think it's important that we thank you for the support that you provide for that as well. The early education services in College Station ISD begin really early. Pregnant moms are eligible to be in early Head Start, where we go with children up to age three plus. The children who are three by September first are in Head Start classrooms, and that goes through five plus, and those pluses are on there because just because you turn three doesn't mean you have to leave. You get to finish your year, same as if you're five. So it's important that we think about children in that transition phase as well. We're talking about families of these zero to five-year-old children. We also have some special populations that we talk about, and certainly being in the A and M community, that international families are an important component of those who we serve. Additionally, we work very closely with the Special Services Department and have inclusive classrooms for children in PPCD. And finally, the bilingual children and their families, at this point, only Spanish, but the other languages come under that international piece that we have already mentioned. So those are who receive the services in College Station ISD. When we talk about by the numbers, whoops, my last one didn't get bulleted right. I'm going to give you Head Start and Early Head Start. Numbers here are funded enrollment for Head Start, one ninety-six, for Early Head Start, one hundred. Our actual enrollment means that we meet our funded enrollment, which is critical, and this is our actual enrollment figures as of today, one ninety-six and one hundred. But we also serve children in transition, so we have children that move in and out of our programs. To date, we've served two hundred and eight children in Head Start and a hundred and twelve children and families in Early Head Start. You know that we've talked a lot in the past about waiting list, so here you see two sets of numbers. The first thirty income-eligible children are on the waiting list for Head Start, and there are two hundred and twenty-eight others who would love to be in our program. Now, those families may make two dollars over the poverty guideline, or they may make sixty thousand dollars over. It's a wide variety. And for Early Head Start, we have eleven income-eligible and fifty-one total children on the waiting list. These are our funding numbers. You've seen those in the past. You'll see them again next month as we prepare our grant. This year, we're almost one point five for Head Start, a little over six hundred thousand for Early Head Start. Important to know that the COLA or Cost of Living Allowance is included in these. You can see that those amounts are pretty small, but at this point, every little bit helps. That money is earmarked for actual salary increases or increase in costs for the program. The last section there for Head Start and Early Head Start, total staff of fifty-two, thirty line staff in Head Start, nine in Early Head Start, and then the admin and support staff for both programs there. I'm happy to take questions as we go along, if you have anything, just wave at me. So pre-K by the numbers. The current enrollment, a hundred and twenty-two children. Total number served this year, a hundred and forty-two. We do keep count of reasons that families move out of pre-K, and that is for either a family move or because transportation is too hard. Pre-K is not at every campus, and some families have a difficult time with transportation. It's on five classrooms on four campuses. The sessions include one full day, which if you remember, is our high-quality funding that we received for this school year. There's a bilingual pre-K program that's half-day. There are seven English half-day programs and one inclusive half-day program, which is new for us this year and is working out very well. This does include the high-quality grant, as I mentioned, and the staff here are nineteen, twelve, and you see the admin and support staff there. Okay, some data from our programs. This is important because, as you know, you are the governing body for Head Start, and so it's important for you to have this kind of information as we move forward in planning for the new program year. The health data you see here, the first one is Head Start. Ninety-one percent of our children received their physical exams, ninety-two received their dental exams. We will continue to work with those families because we want that to be one hundred or as close as possible to that, and ninety-seven percent of the children are up to date on their immunizations. For Early Head Start, you see those numbers are a little bit less. Part of that is because babies go to the doctor a lot, and it's pretty hard for families who have challenges to make sure they get every single one of those well-baby checks done. So we continue to work with families to get that taken care of. Dental is actually pretty high because there's not very many dentists in our area that see children under three. The Head Start regulation is that children see a dentist by the time they're twelve months old. I don't know about you, but my children did not go to the dentist that early. So that's the regulation, and so working on those in the same way, immunizations, the same thing, lots of immunizations for very young children. So we work again with families to make sure that all of those are done. So we work again with families to make sure that all of those are done as quickly and as conveniently as possible for the families. So that's the health data. Some family data is from our end-of-year, as it says, from fifteen sixteen, from our end-of-year survey with families. We found that ninety-four percent of the families felt that Head Start was preparing their child for school. These are Head Start-only, uh, numbers on this slide. School readiness goals, we'll talk about that in just a moment, but I wanted to include it here because these are numbers from families. And for those of you who are math people, I realize that doesn't add up to a hundred, but that's because some families chose more than one goal. So you see the three that they chose there out of our five school readiness goals. We'll talk about those in just a moment. But there are that many families that are interested in making a difference and interested in investing their family time in the, uh, good, uh, results for their children. This is a form that you have on your table. If it's easier for you to look at there, uh, the main thing we're looking at is all those bolded numbers with no color because those are all the areas where we exceeded the ninety percent mark. The school readiness committee determined that ninety percent would be our benchmark for, uh, children who were meeting and exceeding the assessment that was given to them. So you see all of those bolded numbers are in that area. What we do when we look at this is see, well, what, what are we missing? What's not a bolded number? And you see the yellow there, as you look at on your form, the yellow is between eighty and eighty-nine percent. So actually, uh, we feel like we did pretty well on those, even though we didn't quite hit ninety percent, we're close on a number of those. The only one that is red or of great concern to us, uh, is under dual-language learning, on the, dual-language learners on the far right. You see that language is a very low score, which is to be expected, but still something that we would work on. Any questions on any of that? These again are Head Start-only, not Early Head Start. These are the pre-K, uh, this is the pre-K data from the same fifteen sixteen year, same assessment. These children are all four years old, there are no three-years-old, three-year-old children, uh, in this, uh, data collection because you must be four by September first to attend pre-K. So again, you see that there are some, uh, bold numbers there that show above ninety percent. There are some other things there that we're going to be working on. Cognition, uh, across has that close to, close to ninety percent at the eighty to eighty-nine percent. Uh, the couple of things there that are really, uh, concerning to us are those red numbers, which are, uh, if you notice, under the African-American, uh, column. This is pretty consistent with district, but it also is something that we need to grow and work on. Anything there? Okay. So again, let's talk just a moment. Again, I'm speaking to you as the governing body now. Uh, school readiness is a mandate from Head Start. These are the goals that the school readiness committee put together. That's a committee of, uh, district staff, uh, community people, parents, uh, and Head Start staff, birth to five. So these are the goals, again, that are birth to five for, um, each of the areas. And the, uh, words that are in the rust color in parentheses are the domain that you looked at previously. There are five domains on the Head Start Early Learning Outcomes Framework. So you see managing emotions, forming relationships, communicating, not just with conversation and language, but also with print are listed there. The other two are the awareness of number concepts, which is, uh, the cognition piece, and also includes science. And then finally, physical development, which includes large and small muscles, as well as health topics such as nutrition. So those are the school readiness goals that the school, um, readiness committee put together, um, last year. We just had our meeting today at noon, and the committee determined that they would keep these goals for another year. So how are we going to make that happen? We want to improve the quality of teacher-child interactions, implement evidence-based teaching practices. We want to look at our curriculum. It must be evidence-based with research backup. Um, important to all of, uh, the Head Start staff is the professional development that we work with, and then finally, the engagement of the families, uh, in the work that we're doing. So that's our action plan. We've seen the data. This is our action plan. So what, oh, I'm sorry, effective transitions for kindergarten always, and effective transitions from early Head Start into Head Start. So what are we going to do with these decisions? Again, a Head Start mandate is that all decisions are driven by data. So we have, because social-emotional was something that, uh, showed it needed more work. We have conscious discipline training, uh, that's already taken place with some certified conscious discipline trainers for both Head Start and Early Head Start staff. We have behavior management that Special Services has assisted us with for our classroom, uh, staff to assist the social-emotional component. And finally, class, which is the classroom, uh, assessment that we use with our teaching staff. We have focused on concept development, language modeling, and vocabulary development. Again, that shoots, uh, at those language skills. And finally, we have Amanda Morgan coming in, who is, uh, a well-known presenter in the area of intentional instruction. So that's where we have that coming in January. So we hope that those things will, um, will make a difference in our mid-year scores. Some of the challenges that face Head Start as we move forward, certainly the static funding, uh, costs ever increasing, every year salaries go up, as does almost everything else. So you saw the, uh, the amount that we were given to deal with that was twenty-five thousand dollars. So that, uh, is always a challenge as we try to continue to provide the services that are important with the funding that we're given. The deficiency result that we have, uh, spoken about from last December is, uh, finally resolved, and it was, um, stated that we had done what we could do. However, we still have to face recompetition because of that. A little bit like the discussion you were having previously about, um, accountability. So that will be something that's a challenge for us because that, um, grant writing is different than grant writing on a regular basis. So we will be looking at that. The growing need for more mental health and behavioral support. We see more children with more issues coming to us. Uh, this has been a particularly tough year for a few reasons, and using our mental health consultant is beneficial, using our special services support is beneficial, but this is something we see growing throughout, uh, over the past few years. Uh, the community needs for our family support. Uh, housing is very difficult in College Station right now for low-income families. Technical training is pretty much non-existent, and, uh, transportation is not listed on there, but that in itself is hard, uh, for families without, uh, a vehicle of their own. And finally, just succession planning for future needs in our program. So never wanting to end on a, on a gloomy note, the celebrations that we have. Certainly, we're fully enrolled. We have a waiting list. We have excellent and experienced staff that are so dedicated to the work that they do every day. We have strong support from the district. We have, uh, great support from our governing body, fabulous facilities, uh, great community connections with a number of different, uh, entities that are working with us on a regular basis. And certainly, we are able to have strong professional development opportunities, not just what we provide, but what's also provided on the campus for the, for the teaching staff. And finally, we have dedicated and long-term staff as well in our administration. So those are some of our celebrations. And just thinking about the future, we certainly want to look for additional ways to grow in pre-K. We've recently gotten, uh, word that our district was one of twenty-one that received, uh, funding to partner with three childcare centers who are highly ranked in the quality system of Texas. So we're going to be, it's a planning grant for the coming semester, and then we will be starting that partnership, uh, in the next school year. So that's exciting. Uh, investigation always of additional Head Start funding, uh, consideration of, uh, different classrooms and those kind of things. The, uh, potential collaboration for center-based early Head Start services, again, that would be a collaboration with childcare, and continued partnership with the childcare centers as we move, uh, into that new, new branch of how we're going to get along with, uh, with new neighbors in that regard. So five numbers that I'd like for you to remember. Seven hundred per second is how many new neural networks are formed in the early years of a child's life. Eighteen months is the age at which vocabulary deficiencies become avail, uh, become, uh, evident. Ninety to a hundred percent is how, um, how certain it is that children who have six to seven adverse childhood experiences have difficulty as they grow up. Three to one are the odds for adult health, uh, issues such as heart attacks for children with seven to eight adverse childhood experiences. And four to nine dollars is the return on the investment into one, for one dollar into early childhood. So that's my little advocacy push for you. Um, want to thank you for your service and support, as always, for the early education services in College Station and for your interest in these young children as they learn and grow. Any questions or anything else?
Thank you very much for your report. I, uh, I think you did a great job of, uh, go walking everyone through. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, I, you know, I would just say, Sharon, you know, we, I think every time we see you, sometimes we get so bogged down in all the numbers that you're legally required to report, all this, um, stuff that we see for Head Start, and sometimes I think we lose sight of the fact that you guys are making a huge difference, uh, in the lives of these, uh, young children. And, you know, I, I think that we just see more and more research, uh, continually coming out that this is, at the end of the day, this is where we make our biggest difference for kids from a school system perspective.
Thank you for knowing that.
And that if we're gonna really start focusing on making some big differences, I think as a school district, these early on, uh, through elementary school especially are the areas in which we're gonna have the opportunity to make the biggest difference. So, uh, certainly know that, I, I, I think that, uh, we are very, uh, thankful for the work that you're doing. And although I'm sure at times it feels like you are administratively completely and totally bogged down with stuff, uh, that I might or might not always seem like it's worth going through, I mean, just, I think, know that, uh, you're making a big difference for these kids, and please, uh, pass that along to your staff.
I'll be happy to do that. It's to their credit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to K one, consideration and action in order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax school building bond series two thousand seventeen, et cetera.
Dr. Ely. Dr. Yoken, uh, members of the board, uh, yes, as the, the voters for College Station ISD in November of two thousand fifteen passed a hundred and thirty-five point nine million-dollar bond, uh, issue. Last year, the, uh, board authorized, and we went through the sale of sixty-seven point nine five million dollars. Uh, we have that same opportunity before us now. So, uh, with more details on, uh, the policies, uh, and the parameters for the sale, we have Victor Kirogo from Frost Bank, who is here, uh, as our financial advisor to take us through a brief presentation. Uh, for members of the audience to know, we went through a longer presentation at the workshop, uh, at the five fifteen meeting. Uh, for other legal questions, we have Jeff Gulbus, uh, with the, uh, firm McCall Parkhurst in Horton, uh, to, uh, answer any questions as well. So with that, Victor.
As Dr. Ely, so thank you for having me here this evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Victor Kirogo with Frost Bank, and we have the honor of representing you as your financial advisor. Uh, I'm not going to go page by page and number and number like we did during the workshop, but just wanted to, uh, provide you a brief overview of what we spoke about. Uh, we are proceeding, uh, with the process of issuing sixty-seven point nine five million dollars in bonds, which will exhaust the bond authorization that the voters gave us November two thousand fifteen of one hundred thirty-five point nine million dollars. The, uh, sell method that we are recommending, uh, will be, uh, further down here from the presentation that we cover, which, uh, covered just an overview of the district's debt position, the wonderful, uh, credit rating, um, uh, that we spoke about, a highly rated, uh, financially, uh, school district. As you can see there, the, uh, investment grades were in the double-A category, which is very strong, but the bonds, when we issue them next month, will carry the highest and safest rating available, which is the triple-A rating due to the permanent school fund guarantee that, uh, TEA offers to school districts. I'll just go down here to the, um, uh, the, uh, financing goals. Uh, this is slide nineteen, the presentation we shared with you. Again, uh, we sold half of the authorization last year. That resulted in a three point three one cent INS tax rate increase for this current year that we're in. Uh, the remaining authorization, we're anticipating it, uh, being an additional impact of three to four cents. Uh, however, that won't be known until we receive our property values next July, and we are finalizing our budget for the following year. But the payments that we're, uh, considering this evening will, uh, occur, uh, in the next fiscal year. Uh, the key dates here is this evening, what you're doing is you're allowing us to continue moving forward with the document preparation issue bond. Uh, we are recommending we stick with the competitive sell method. We're scheduling that competitive sell, uh, to occur January eighteenth. We'll open the bids at that point. Uh, the action item that you're considering this evening will allow Dr. Ely or Mr. Martindale, uh, to sign the final documents, uh, and then that'll allow us to close in this transaction while the district will receive its funding on February sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And that's just on electronic wire, and those, there's no meeting required. Uh, the annual payments, we're looking at about four point five million dollars, and the term sheet, uh, we spoke about as well, it's just a summary of the transaction. Uh, here are the parameters, uh, that's in the legal document that you're considering this evening. The maximum amount we could sell is sixty-seven point nine five million dollars. Uh, the maximum interest rate is five percent, although we anticipate it being, uh, less than that. And the, this will be a twenty-five-year, uh, bond, just like we, uh, informed the voters when we were communicating that with them before the bond election. I'll be happy to answer any questions or, or invite Jeff to speak to you about the, um, authorization you're given tonight.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Like I'm always the one that's looked at. Uh, you look, you look over there at Quinn and Shenujus next time. Uh, I recommend the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees approving order authorizing issuance of unlimited tax school building bond series two thousand seventeen, appointing a pricing officer and delegating to the pricing officer the authority to approve the sale of the bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval, such matters approving paying agent registrar agreement, levying, and annual ad valorem tax for the payment of bonds and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us here. We'll, we'll get to work.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Jeff.
We'll move on to K two, consideration discussion on possible action related to the annual financial and compliance report for the fiscal year ending August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. Uh, earlier, we talked a lot about transparency and accountability. Uh, and, uh, it's, I think it's important for the community to know that, uh, one of the things that we must do as a public school system is that you as a board must enter into an agreement with an outside, um, auditor to take an independent look, uh, at our financials. And so we, uh, have worked for a number of years with Weaver and Tidwell, and Shelby Lackey is here today, uh, to give us a presentation, uh, in regards to our annual financial audit, uh, and the good news that, uh, that we have to report with that. So, Shelby.
Thank you. Um, board, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be re-engaged again this year, and, um, we'd like to thank Mike and Deborah and their staff for running a wonderful department. They do truly make our job easier when we come to visit. And, um, I can't always say that, so I do appreciate it. In the front of your book, there'll be a few pages that are, uh, Management's Discussion and Analysis that talks about the district and the activity that happened about a ten-thousand-mile view throughout the year. And there'll be a couple of statements in the front that are government-wide statements that are on full accrual, um, which you guys see once a year. They're not really what you make your decisions on, you're only required to do that for, um, financial statement purposes once a year. And so I would point you to page eighteen, which is the balance sheet for your governmental funds, and those are the financial statements that you use to make a decision on a monthly basis within the district. Your general fund is the general operating fund of the district where the majority of your activity happens. You can see it had thirty-seven point six million dollars in assets, mainly your cash and investments. You had three point seven million in liabilities, mainly accrued wages, unavailable property taxes of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, resulting in fund balance of thirty-two point nine million, almost thirty-three million. The debt service fund is where the separate property taxes are allied. The debt service fund is where the separate property taxes are allocated to pay, repay debt that you issue, just as you all discussed a few minutes ago. You had $7 million in assets, mainly, again, investments in cash, unavailable property taxes of $263,000, resulting in fund balance of $6.7 million. The capital projects fund is where those bond issued funds will be sent and wait to be spent on capital projects, things as buildings, you know, renovations, things of that nature. You can see this year you had $75 million left from previous bond issues, mainly in cash, liabilities of $6.6 million, mainly accounts payable, those payable out to vendors, resulting in restricted fund balance for capital projects of $68 million. The total non-major governmental funds are those local, state, and federal grant programs that tend to come in and out within the current period. So you can see there you had a fund balance of $1.5 million. Page 22 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, your income statement, so to speak. You can see your general fund had $99 million in revenues, mainly local property taxes and state revenue, 96.7 in expenditures, mainly instruction, resulting in an increase in fund balance of three points, or excuse me, $2.3 million, bringing that fund balance to $32.9 million. Debt service fund had mainly your property taxes and state revenues equalling $25.5 million. You made your debt payments of $24.6 million, increasing fund balance by $873,000. Capital projects fund had some small interest earnings, paid out $41.6 million for capital outlay. You issued bonds last year, just as you're talking about doing again this year, resulting in a net increase in fund balance of $30 million. I would flip you over to the back of your financial statement packet to page 84. If you were going to leave here today and you were going to be asked questions, this would be your favorite page. Gives you a good summary of everything that we talked about. Your financial statements, your auditor issued a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning we did not see any materially misstated numbers. Your internal control over financial reporting, we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report, nor did we have any non-compliance that was material to the financial statements. You all are held to a higher standard because you do expend $750,000 or more in federal funds, so you were required to have a single audit, which we issued a clean opinion there, and we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. The major programs that we tested this year were special ed and the Title II principal and teacher training. And you all did qualify as a low-risk audit team, meaning you did not have any significant findings in the last couple of years. Did entertain any questions anybody might have?
Thank you for that summary. Any questions?
I don't have any questions of her, and I want to tell everyone, including the board, that we had our audit committee meeting prior to the workshop. Dr. Wesson and I sat down with the auditors and the administration and walked through this. And there are a couple of things that I want to point out to you all that we noted as we went through it, and you may have questions about those for her. The first, clearly the most important thing, she pointed out, page 84, the summary, no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies resulting in a clean opinion. That's what we're looking for when we do this. So that's kind of the bottom-line answer we passed. Okay. Now...
You got an A.
Okay. We got an A. But not to reduce it to just a single measure, let's look at some of the details. And on page 56, one of them, this is a pretty good detail for you about the difference in the budgeted amount from our O&amp;M account. We actually had about 1.8, ultimately after adjustments, got down to $1.3 million deficit, and we actually came in at a $2.3 million surplus, which is good. And I want you to know that there's actually material in here that you can break that down even further. So if you want to know all that, you can, but what we looked at was the combination of revenues that were greater and expenses that were lower. And in the audit committee, we walked through those to some extent and looked at it and made sure that, okay, we're on track for it. Why did it happen? Is it something we need to worry about? Greater revenues, I'm never worried about, but expenses, we focused on a little bit and talked a little bit about balancing, okay, being fiscally responsible, but also making sure we're expending the money we need to, to meet the needs of students and staff. And the administration felt comfortable with that, and really, it was just a lot of good things came together from a budgetary standpoint for us. I mean, it was across the board, really, and it just added up into this cumulative difference of $3.7 million, which is a nice, nice way to go. Okay, so that's one. The other thing is, it actually dealt with the pension liability, which I confess, I did not know and still don't know a whole lot about. I know more about than I did, though, because our numbers actually, I mean, to me, it jumped off the page, and it's actually on page 57. If you'll look over to your right, we grew from a, our net share of the pension liability from $12.9 million to $24.7 million. So it basically doubled from the last audit that we looked at to this one. And it's, it really had to do with investment performance at the state level in TRS. So it's nothing for us to worry about. We have satisfied all of our obligations in terms of pension funding, but it is important to note that it does show an increased share of that pension liability for us. Now, the hope is, maybe next time, the investment returns will exceed projections at the state level, and maybe that will head in the other direction, but it's something to keep an eye on, at least in my opinion. Okay, that's it. And Michael Wesson, sorry, Dr. Wesson had his red pen, so who knows what we're in store for with that.
I think we're good. I would just say, you know, I'm, it's clear by the evidence in this report, A, that Mike Martindale and Deborah Park should be commended greatly for the fact that you guys do an exceptional job every year of putting us in a position as a district to kind of know where we are. And you do an exceptional job of following through, of keeping us accountable and transparent to our outside community. I would also say, it was evident as we really talked through expenses, that we have a district that has a tendency to hold tight to a budget and doesn't overspend, even when, I don't know if you guys were ever open with all the people around our district, employees, that we were coming in favorable, but it's clear that we came in under. And we drove that through efficiency, not necessarily sacrificing things that our students needed, as Mr. Harris said. So thank you guys once again for an outstanding process. And, you know, I think we all look at that number and say, we are excited to have our fund balance back up again after operating a number of years over the last five or six in more of a deficit kind of framework. Clearly, we would anticipate our numbers for next year, given how we budgeted things to not come in looking likely quite as good as this, so bask in glory while we have it, and we'll deal with the ramifications of the other side on next year. Next year. Thank you. Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, if I could, just hit a couple of things. First, I appreciate your thoughts and your comments, Dr. Wesson, on the amount of fund balance. We are opening three schools in the next two years, and so we will have an opportunity to, having the extra thereover of what we had predicted will definitely help in that process right there. And we are going through a salary study right now to look at a number of other things in the district as well. So having that capacity there will be beneficial to the district. Mr. Harris, in regards to pension, I think it's important that we have the community here to talk a little bit about pensions, because it's going to get a lot of play in the legislative session this next year, already has. There's a vast difference between our pension, the teacher retirement system of Texas, and the municipal fire and police pensions that you're seeing in major metropolitan areas that are being run by those municipalities. Ours has, is a huge pension because of all of the teachers and retired teachers around the state. Two legislative sessions ago, it was made, it was extended its financial, what's the word I'm looking for, Shelby?
Solvency.
Yeah, solvency for 75 years through the increased inputs from not only employees with an extra 1.3% of their salaries annually going into the pension, increased money coming from local school districts from us every year, and increase from the state as well. So it is on totally different footing and should not be thought of in the same manner as some of those other pensions that we'll see there. We are on great financial footing. Appreciate the legislature actually in making sure that that is that way for our current retired teachers and those who will be retiring under that system. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to Deborah and her staff, and I see Carmela Schaefer's in the back, she did a lot of work as well, so I wanted to publicly thank her for her work as well. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I move we approve the annual financial and compliance audit report for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2016 as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
The members of the audit committee would like to take credit for the surplus. Thank you.
Donuts for everybody.
I guess both ways.
Yeah. We'll move on. We'll move on to L1, consideration discussion on possible action related to renovations at Oakwood Intermediate School funded by the 2015 bond program. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. And part of the 2015 bond, not only was building those three campuses, we talked about opening in the next two years, but with some renovations to our four current intermediate middle schools, Oakwood, AMCMS, Cypress Grove, and College Station Middle School. One of the items identified for Oakwood Intermediate School was the front entrance and moving of the choir room that was contemplated to be done this summer. We have the administration, both campus administration and district administration, would recommend doing something else with those dollars for the benefit of the entire school at Oakwood. We've had a tour over there last week for some board members to be able to see what we're talking about. And with more information on that is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. As Dr. Ely mentioned, one of the projects listed specifically in the 2015 bond package was the Oakwood Entrance Project, which is part of the renovations to current fifth through eighth grade campuses section of the bond. For this particular project over at Oakwood, the rough concept during bond planning was to create a space within the front section of the building that could be used kind of as a big commons area, kind of like we have at some other campuses. They could serve many different purposes, but primarily to facilitate the ease of entrance to the campus for students, parents, and visitors. At that time, the thought was to relocate the choir room to the back of the building in order to create this commons area. And this is how the proposed work was communicated to the public. And in fact, my memo actually has the exact language included in the bond communications. After the, after the bond was passed and a more detailed design commenced, this area, of course, was carefully reviewed, and it became apparent that the security vestibule was not going to function properly if we had that big commons area on the other side of the main entrance, located exactly where the choir room is sitting right now. So as a result, the temporary solution of capturing and relocating the corner classroom right across from the office area became the obvious solution. This is after we met with the architects and pushed and pulled on walls and looked at several different options. The idea was to eventually move the choir room to the back of the building as per the bond language, but in that first section, the first phase of work, the choir was to be renovated in its current location, and the two locker rooms in the back of the building were to be converted into two more classrooms. All of that was included in our project this past summer. And so after completion of that work this past summer, and we got everyone moved in and started using the building, it became very evident that the temporary solution was looking like the best solution, and that we should at least consider keeping the choir room in the front of the building with the other fine arts classrooms to kind of have a small fine arts wing up front, and leaving the two new classrooms in the back as they are, especially as we're considering opening up Pecan Trail Intermediate and having to move out a couple of the portable buildings. This would have the added benefit of freeing up some funding for paint and flooring needs elsewhere in Oakwood Intermediate School building. Understanding the critical need for transparency relating to such decisions, we are bringing this to the board for making the final determination on this and lieu of just making a decision that did not perfectly align with what had been communicated to the public. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District approve the modification of the original Oakwood Intermediate School renovation concept by allowing the choir room to remain where it is currently located, keeping the two classrooms in the back of the building as they currently exist, and utilizing the funding planned for that to paint and replace flooring elsewhere in the building. With that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment. This is one of those times where I think something on paper looks better than what it is in actual reality. Sometimes, logistically, it doesn't work out like it's stated on paper. That doesn't mean that this is a bad situation. It just means that, in reality, this is the better solution. And I trust the district and Mr. Hall in trying to make, accommodate, and use our dollars wisely, and have in the past used that wisely, and would like to see us do what they ask and realizing that, I guess the public needs to know that they are, that we fully trust what they are in the daily grind and knowing what's going to work best for these students, and that the students in Oakwood are still using, getting that money, and they're actually going to get some paint and some great things on, over the whole building that I think they'll be really hap, the students will be really happy about.
Good.
Well, I guess mine's a comment, too, and it's very much in that same line. It's, as I'm hearing the discussion about it, the first time I heard it and then hear again, I can tell you, as a board member, but also as a taxpayer, this excites me that you all have come to these conclusions and that we're not just going to spend money because we said we would. We actually have adjusted, and I give Mr. Simak a lot of credit, and the rest of you in the administration and our outside advisors for recognizing that a change of direction is the right answer. The fact that it saves us a bunch of money on construction that we think might even be counterproductive is a tremendous benefit, but I really want to commend you all for having the strength to do that, because I hope you look elsewhere. If we're on a path and it's determined after living with something, wait a minute, we should change directions? That's the kind of behavior that, as a board, I think we want to encourage, but also as a taxpaying citizen, I want to encourage, because it makes a heck of a lot of sense. So I'm very much in favor of this modification, and I thank you for bringing it to us.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. I move we approve the modification of the original Oakwood Intermediate School renovation concept as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to F2, which is consideration discussion on possible action regarding the reorganization of board officers. The board will meet in an executive session to discuss qualifications of new executive board nominees. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters closed meeting exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We will come back into open session to actually make the... back into open session to actually make the, pardon me, take action. We're doing Item F2, the board reorganization?
I make the motion that we elect Valerie Yoken as the board president, Jeff Harris as vice president, and Carol Barrett as secretary. I think the leadership that they provided after studying this, I think that they do a very well job at what they do, and that getting everybody's input, I think that would be the best thing for the district to continue that.
I'll second that motion and add that I think our leadership over the last six months, I know this has been a drying time, I just want to publicly state that I think the members of this board appreciate you guys an awful lot for stepping up at times and leading us as a board. And I don't think there's ever been a point in time where any of the three of you have felt like you're more important than either rest of us, but you keep us focused very well on an acceptable process for how we go about making decisions. And we thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to another year underneath the three of you.
Okay, we have a, all right, we have a motion, a second. Does we have any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, so the motion carries 7-0. We're adjourned.